Great. Going to order the Needham Select Board meeting for March 12th. The first item on our agenda is public comment. Okay, I'm not aware of any public comments this evening. None. I will take this opportunity at public comment to note that the board did receive a letter about dogs, and I'm just going to remind all of our dog walkers that when you have your dog off leash in an area where it's not permitted to be off leash, it may not be your dog we're worried about. It may be somebody's dog who's on leash, who's an unfriendly dog. So please, if you are walking your dog somewhere where your dog should be on leash, we ask you to keep the dog on leash. Thank you. Well, the first official item on the agenda is the approval to approve the sale of bond anticipation notes. So Mr. Davis and Ms. Ryan are here, and our town clerk is here to observe our proceedings and ensure that the select board is not under duress for any of this.
Correct.
Thank you. Under duress. Or under stress, that works too.
So, Madam Chair, Diane Ryan asked the board to approve a sale of a bond anticipation note. This is a note for $2,705,000. It's for a short duration and actually matures in three months, at which time that we will be paying it off. It's a note that the town was offered an interest rate of 4% with a premium of $3,022.25, which brings the cost to the town of Needham on interest rate cost of 3.4135%. A very good rate. It's the we had higher rates all through calendar year 2023, and they've come down a little from 2023. It's the best rates we've had since 2022, but not as low as those rates were through 2018 and through 2022. But at least it's better than the last couple of bond anticipation notes. Coupon rates are still 5%. Not as many of the bidders. We had five bidders. That's good for something in short-term loan like this to have five bidders. So we know that we're getting competitive rates. And their interests, of course, Needham goes to market often, and Needham is a AAA community. But there were some of the bids that had a 5% interest rate. So there's there's still concern in the marketplace that interest rates may not be dropping as quickly as folks may like to see that. That is, folks that are borrowing, those who are, who love the higher rates. Turn the questions the board may have.
And I think everybody on the board knows, and just for the public as well, these bond anticipation notes are short-term specifically because they're just sort of, while we're constructing things, we sort of gather up our bonds until we're ready to issue a larger bond for longer-term funding. So it's a way of just keeping the funding in order over time. Any questions for Dave?
This is for Emory Grover.
The I notice that they're financing with this is Emory Grover. And it is hopefully the last of the public safety building project. The rooftop unit, which we're just beginning. Elliott School and Zoom Broad Meadow and RTS Property Improvements. They're all in different stages of completion. Of course, public safety building being almost wrapped up. Final bills, in fact, there's still a sign that needs to be put up so we know we have Elliott School, it's coming.
Okay.
If there are no other questions.
Right, so there are six motions.
Oh, wait, there's one thing we need to do. I need to appoint a temporary clerk for the board. So this is actually the first thing that we need to do with Heidi not present physically this evening. We need somebody who is able to sign. So I would appreciate a motion to appoint Kathy Dowd as the temporary clerk of the board for the evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? We need a roll call vote. Heidi?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Kevin?
Yes.
Marcus? And the chair votes yes. Now we have a series of six motions. So do you need them to be read in their entirety, or can they be moved as presented with the materials?
They can be moved as presented with the materials because all this information was included in the packet that's available online.
Okay, so I would welcome, unless somebody's really motivated to read all the motions, but.
So I'm sorry, how do you want this? Ready on the budget now?
You, as you wish, Kevin.
I think Marcus is doing a brilliant job. But I do move that motions and the materials presented before.
Any further discussion? Again, we'll need a roll call vote. Heidi?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye.
Wow.
All in favor. Okay.
So, Madam Chair, we have some signature pages that need to be signed by the members, so.
Thank you.
Be back.
All right.
Yet another.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Diane. I know it's a busy place these days, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And it's good news that the rate is lower. I'm not sure what it will look like by June. You can cross your fingers.
Let me do this if I didn't mention that the town clerk we are witnessing that these votes were taken not under duress. This will be the last time that she'll be acting in that capacity because again, we won't be back until June. He's stepping down after election.
We're gonna have to be about grace for saying thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Kevin. And thank you, Dave, for reminding us. Miles, by any chance I could get a printed agenda? I would deeply appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, babe.
The next item on our agenda this evening is, Kevin just gave me one, so I don't know. The next item on our agenda is a granted location engineering review process. And I think we have Tom Rider here, and I don't know if Karis is putting up. Thank you for coming and doing this. This is something we've talked about for a while. This process seems to be sometimes a mystery. So it will be good just to review it.
So grant location process, this is under the Massachusetts, oh, sorry, Tom Rider, town engineer. Massachusetts General, ROR, Chapter 166. So usually the process begins with a utility incorporated in Massachusetts with transmission of electricity, telephone, television signals, street railway, otherwise lighting, heating, and power. These utilities can request a grant for the utility being the public right of way. So usually start the process with a submitted request to the select board. And then the select board, the office, sends it to engineering, and we review the grant, the location, as well as repair the butters list. It requires a public hearing, and the butters that are in front of where the transmission is going, or if it's under their property or overhead, such as, could also be a telephone pole, are notified seven days in advance of the public hearing. Meanwhile, the engineering office, we inspect the site, check to make sure that where our utilities are, make sure there's no conflicts. Check to make sure there's a public way because they don't have to do it if it's not a public way. So this is just for public ways. Write an exact the fence is coming from. And we also document with photos to verify other utilities, make sure there's no conflicts. So maybe about six years ago, our form used to be on the permit itself, saying we have no objections, we proceed. There were some situations where the developer already started the process, started digging through the road and gets free permit. So we create a form to put this up board in order to make sure that the developers are noticed that they have to have the public hearing before they start the construction in the public right of way. So that is where we are right now. If we have the form, I can show that the form looks like. So.
So I think we have that form in our packet. I'm just curious, is Needham unusual in requiring a public hearing? It feels like a number of developers are surprised.
Typically, you know, I've worked in other towns, and typically it's usually for telephone poles, new pole being located. We do have a lot of residents that want underground electricity coming from the pole, the overhead wires. So a lot of the other towns are still have overhead. That doesn't require the grant. So they're going underneath the sidewalk or going across the road. So yes, I'm not quite sure of the towns that do not require it. Some towns have a blanket approval for the utility, but we've always required a grant if it's in the public way.
Some boards have delegated to DPW as well.
Yes.
And as I recall, the ones that have generated the most public comment generally have involved cases where it might be going underground and it's near a tree. So those are the ones that I think of where we tend to see somebody actually come out, and it's valuable to have them noticed as in a butter. Otherwise, they might not be aware that a tree on their property may be threatened.
Can I interrupt? Is this about 70 countryway?
No, it's not, not yet. We'll come to that next, I think. We're just talking about how the process works. Thank you. So at any rate, that's what I've seen, I think, the most. I don't know if you have any observations about what you think has have generated.
Yeah, so the trees are number one, and then also a new pole. There are, there has been in the past, there have been times where Verizon wants to set a new pole or has to set a new pole, and it's going to be right in front of someone's window or, you know, near a walkway or something. And usually, usually we have a site visit and we find out a new location, a possible location.
Great. Questions from board members? So it sounds like, apart from the noticing of the butters of the situations you just mentioned, it seems like a lot of the value of this is avoiding conflicts between utilities. Can you expand on that a little bit or give us an example or two?
So if we're crossing where a hydrant is, we need to make sure that we're not going to be disrupting our water services. You know, there could be other gas lines that, you know, Eversource, sometimes they don't communicate with each other. There could be a gas service in the sidewalk. For example, on the countryway, there is a gas going right down the sidewalk. And so we can have to angle their away from a gas service.
Keep it clear with us. I don't want this to ask that public can comment. Just as we look at section of the road, how's this look underneath of like, I know in one, it's sometimes it comes across like 340 schedule 40 pipes, something like that. So it's under the roadway, the road will be crossing, like in some cases, there's a drain somewhere.
So the electrical, the electrical code as well, so it's going to be at least two feet below the ground surface.
Okay.
And it's going to be deep enough where it's not going to impact our road.
Correct. And then is it on top of water and sewer? How are we going down?
So then so gas and electric are going to be around the same elevation.
Okay.
And then our sewer probably will be a little bit lower typically.
Okay.
But that can range and drain. Water is usually about five and a half feet deep.
Okay.
To the top of the pipe.
So it's packed under there?
Yeah.
There's layers.
Yeah. And then we've also required in the past electrical mains to be five and a half feet down as well.
Okay, yes. Okay. Who's signing these? Like I'm sitting on, I can't make out their signatures on, like suppose, and we're not talking about, who signs these?
So it starts with one of our civil engineers in the engineering office, and he does a preliminary review, and then goes away, and then I do the final sign off.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the explanation. And a question about the butters getting noticed, and they get the seven days prior to the hearing. And you said it's the butters that are in front of the, you said transmission? Or did you say the train?
Yes. So if there's a new pole in front of their property, they get notified.
Yeah. And then there's everyone that would be affected by that, like within the area, or just the people that are in front of that? Like, you know what I mean? Are enough people getting notified in enough time?
So, right, so legally, it's just the butters right in front, but more is better.
In the past, we feel like people have complained that they weren't given notice because they weren't the essential butters.
The one concern we've had was when the builder does it prior to the to the public hearing. That's the only time typically we notify the surrounding just to be on the safe side.
So, okay, so they break that kind of contract and they start early. And then what are the repercussions when they do that? Because I know it's happened like once or twice since I've been on the board. And you said this rule was established was six years ago?
No. So the form started six years ago. We've always had this rule. So the consequences are starting the grant allocation early, I mean, they're excavating into the public way. So there is potential, you know, fines written notice. Typically, we've been contacting the developer and finding out, you know, why they performed the work ahead of time. And then, I think maybe four or five years ago, they had to attend the meeting in order to understand why they need to hold a public meeting first. So the rule got out there. And Eversource was also doing a better job as well by informing the builders not to begin work. And the building department was working with us as well. You know, Scott from the electrical side, he's been making sure that the builder does not start any work in the public way as well. So sometimes there are eyes as well.
Okay, that's one. So hopefully it doesn't happen anymore, you know, because I feel like that's one of the things, if you come to like, well, we've worked in a lot of towns. We've never had to do this, so we decided to go do that. So how do we, before it happens again? I'm just trying to think practically about that, or we can be the something we can put in place.
It's crossed my mind.
Well, I was just going to say, we've worked with Eversource quite a bit over the past few years because it does these, these conduits don't usually get laid without Eversource being party to it. And so we've really made it clear to Eversource the problems with them continuing to do that work without having the proper grant of location in place. And I think Eversource has been a better partner in the past few years. I think we heard from some of the developers that there were delays on Eversource's part in the process, and I think that has gotten much better, which has sort of reduced that incentive for developers not to follow the process.
And we also, now that we have the online permitting, there is a stop check to say, to indicate if this is electrical underground service, you must apply for grant allocation, so they must.
I can't not see that.
Yeah. Before they continue, they must check off that box that they understand. So hopefully they need it, so.
I don't think we've had any since that electric permit went in, right? So it doesn't seem to be effective. The previous paper version, I know we had tried highlighting it and larger bonds and all kinds of other things. We were still having it happen, but yeah.
Just a follow-up question. In some cases, cutting through the road, who, the patch of it, who fixes it? And is there a standard do we inspect it to see that it's high quality, it's not just?
Typically, it goes through a street permit process, and most of the electrical connections are only going across the sidewalk. Some of them do cross the road.
Right.
So they must pay with street permit. And it's got to be one of our approved licensed street permit operators, so.
Okay, but is there a standard like asphalt it into a happy or?
I, yeah, so they must, they must mill and pre-pave the trench.
Okay.
There's a certain usually amount of footage beyond the trench that they need to restore.
Usually go foot and a half on each side of milling, and then they overlay with asphalt.
Are they ready for the wind to settle, or do they come back again, or is it?
That's checked on because these are, these are more shallow utilities. So we should be rechecking, which we do. Sometimes we have to go back and have the contractor come back and fix it, so.
Great. But we shouldn't see as much settling as we see with some of the other utilities that are longer on the road.
Right, okay.
Heidi, do you have any questions?
I'll send. The only question I have really is just that very occasionally, when we do these grants of location, there's a question on the form, like, this doesn't agree with the map, or whatever it is. And when we go to ask during the public hearing, the Eversource representative often has no idea what we're talking about, has no idea sort of what the facts of the case are. So I guess my only question is, when we see questions on the form or unresolved issues on the form, what is our role exactly?
So I know that was happening for a while. I don't think it's happened more recently. Before, when we were doing the review, if there was a minor inconsistency, that would be sort of how we'd reference it. I believe now we are accompanying that with a memo on the front that explains what that inconsistency is. So it wasn't something that our engineering department felt like should hold up the process, but it was more something in the field that needed to be remedied. So there now should be a memo on top of it if we have anything on the form that is unusual.
I do recall there was a couple of inconsistencies that occurred, like they had the wrong neighboring street address, but we notified the correct addresses. So like they, they thought like the house numbers went 8284, but it really went 8286. So they had a, an address that was incorrect. Or they had a pole number which was reversed the numbers. So, so yeah, so we will proceed with like a memo. This is like a minor issue. It doesn't impact the actual construction. So.
Great.
And let them proceed.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Kevin?
Yeah, just to fill up what Heidi's saying. If there is a problem, can we sort of make it provisional? We can agree to provisionally that, and then bounce it back to you guys to go look and check out issue.
I think we've done that once or twice, where we've given an approval, but it was provision on X, Y, Z getting resolved. We don't want to be holding somebody up from getting occupancy or things like that. So we're careful about how we fit into that process.
We also wouldn't put anything in front of you that we don't believe is minor. So if there's any problems that we find, we would hold off and work with Eversource and the developer until it's ready to go in front of the select board.
Any other questions about the process? Hopefully, it was educational for everybody. That does bring us to the next item on our agenda, which is in fact a public hearing for a grant application for 70 Country Way. And so if we can bring Ms. Calendar in. Great, thank you so much, Emily. Hello, Ms. Calendar?
Good evening.
Here?
I'm here.
Good evening. So tonight, we have a grant of location for 70 Country Way. Do you want to tell us what the request is?
Sure. We're seeking a grant of location to install approximately 70 feet of conduit into Country Way, and that is to provide new underground service to the home at 70 Country Way. Currently, it's overhead, and we're going to remove the overhead line from pole. Let's see here. Three forty-four over eight. We're going to remove the overhead line and issue conduit underground from that pole to the home.
Right.
And this is due to the fact that they need more service, more power for different additions to their home.
All right, so they're upgrading the service?
They are.
Okay. Ms. Fitzpatrick, it looks like everything is in order with this?
As far as we know, yes.
All right. Are there questions from board members? This is a public hearing, so I do want to ask if there are members of the public who have questions. If you would come up and just give us your name and address, that would be great.
Jessica Zelfan Monroe at 80 Country Way, which is next door. And I have four small children, and there are a lot of children on the street. So I just wanted to, I'm not sure who, where the woman is to speak to, but here you are. I just wanted to make sure that this is a safe procedure, not just procedure, but, you know, toxins for the ground, pipes that you might hit. Has there been some reasonable research? So I don't know who to speak to. I'll see if reasonable research done on this and what the ramifications will be. So just here is a precaution. And I know some of my neighbors, the other butters also, we spoke about this too. So just want some more information.
So I may invite Tom to come back up. But what I would say to you is that this is actually a pretty routine matter.
Okay.
And certainly, nobody is testing in the ground for toxins. I don't have any reason to suspect that there's toxins in your neighborhood. But as Tom described when we were talking through the process, these lines are buried two feet down, but they're still relatively shallow. You're correct. Many people are undergrounding wires as they're redoing houses in towns. And I don't know if your house is one of those that has underground a utility it's coming to at this point. But what we're seeing is where electric utilities used to come or frequently came from the pole to the house. That's how it works on my house.
Okay.
Okay. But as people have been building new houses in town, they've been, once they get to the pole, they're putting them underground and running them to the house so that people don't have to worry about that last little leg being what breaks in a storm or a tree comes down on it or something. So it makes them more resilient from that perspective in a storm. So there's good reasons to want to underground utilities. But I also, it's a pretty short transaction just to do that little bit. And so I would not also be really concerned about your children. I think there are people who will be around ensuring safety at that moment. And maybe you could talk about that, Tom. Tom is our town engineer, just in case that wasn't clear when we started this.
Yeah, as far as the service is underground on the safety contaminants, I'm not sure I can speak to that at all. I just know that the length of this line is actually pretty long to begin with. So when they update in their services, it's a probably good idea to have it underground. I think the neighbor to the left has a pole set in the has a pole set in the yard further back because the line is coming from across the street. An extensive length of into that property. So.
Okay.
How long will this take?
To install?
Yeah.
It should only take a day.
Okay.
So.
And just my question about the toxins in the ground is that. I mean, when you're digging things up and there is children, there are children around. That's just my concern now.
So under our roadway, we've, we have a we have gravel borrow, at least twelve inches of gravel borrow. Then we have dense grates. So we have like a heavy layer of over natural material. So there's like, we don't import anything other than gravel bar in order to build the roads. So whatever's in the ground has been there for years. And the other thing too is we are probably going to be paving in the near future of this area.
So certainly there's been digging that's gone on on the property next to you. I would suspect that that probably disturbed a lot more dirt than this particular process will be trenching.
No, this is the public part property that we're, the kids are crossing on. So we wanted to hear some more information.
Certainly I expect that it's going to be fully restored before your kids will be actually walking across it.
Okay.
Okay.
But you still want to understand the toxin part. Is that where you're?
I mean, I would, yeah, it doesn't seem like there are any answers yet because no one, nobody knows. So.
Certainly nobody's testing. Nobody tested at your house. And I don't historically, I don't have any reason to suspect that there's any there, but.
Okay.
Charis, anything from your side with that or what you feel about that? I feel like it's not something that's been asked often. So this is new to us.
We don't routinely test soils around town for contaminants and I don't believe it's required as part of our standard building process to test unless, again, there's some specific reason that we have record to think that something had happened at that location.
As a utility, if they encounter it, they have to report it. So that's something that happens during during the excavation. So there's no reason to think there is something there. So the utility has the opportunity to file which they claim, which they'll claim that they're not responsible for. They still have to do a limited removal action requirements if they find a contaminant as they're doing a utility. So and this was reported. They're supposed to report, they have to report. They could be severely fined if they don't.
Okay. Is there anything specific that you're concerned about?
Yeah. No, I don't want to digress too much. We live near, we live near sort of a dump from years ago. And just just brought a lot of attention to the neighborhood. What's safe now with excavation and.
So what I would say in that particular case is they would have seen materials that would have been suspect in excavating. It's not like you just see regular soil and you would think that there's a problem. There are physical indicators that would show that in that particular location, if it was being used as something other than you know, if it had a prior use, you would see materials under the ground when they excavated for the home.
Heidi. Yeah, I just want, just wanted to say, you know, it seems like this is a short duration project. So maybe this woman could keep her kids like away from the construction site, but then the, once the paving is over, the construction crew will seal the road, correct? And then clean up any debris afterwards. So it seems like because it will be resealed as long as the kids aren't playing around the area, you know, obviously while construction is happening, which I think I would think that they wouldn't anyway. Then once it's resealed, I would think that any issue or potential issue would be, you know, capped.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like we have another hand up online.
Yeah, we have one more hand raised. I'm going to ask Gretchen to share her video.
Yeah, I feel like you felt like you had to stand. I didn't want you to do that. Thank you so much.
Gretchen, you're still muted. So please unmute and.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yes.
I'm the homeowner at seventy country way, and I thought it'd be helpful for me to just clarify our, our plans. We obviously need to upgrade the service to a four hundred amps. And without doing that, I think we run the risk of of overloading that transformer and then losing power to our butters, which we really want to avoid doing. So when we looked into the options, we cannot upgrade at the house because we don't have current clearances with our gas and water meter on that side of the house. So the option was to erect a thirty foot pole in between myself and my neighbor's house, which we thought was a not aesthetically probably what any of my butters would like to see. And that it started some new dangers with new lines overhead and we were still going to try to dig to that area. So I just want to be clear that the majority of the digging is on our property. Both myself, my neighbor, my other neighbor, we have all dug pools recently. So I know that we tested our soil when we did that as part of kind of I think part of the town's regulation, we made sure it was all. So I, I mean, I can't attest that what the soil is like at the front of the house versus the back of the house. But I will say that was something that we thought of as we were digging because of the abutting property that had some issues. And so we certainly could erect a hole on our side of the street, but we thought that this was the safest and best way to handle the situation. And my understanding is that it's a very small corridor. It's a one day project. It's dug and sealed up just like the gas lines and electrical lines that have been done to the other homes in the area. So I don't think it falls off course from any of the other construction that's been happening. But I'm willing to hear arguments if that's the case. We certainly want to make sure everyone's happy and satisfied.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Right? If there are no further questions, then I would welcome a motion.
Your chair, ma'am chair, I suggest I move that the select would approve and sign a petition from ever source energy to install approximately seventy feet of conduit in country way.
All right, we'll need a roll call. Heidi?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Kevin?
Hi.
Kathy?
Yes.
And the chair votes I. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Oh, but you're back. All right. The next item on our agenda is an overview of the existing stormwater bylaw because we are looking at making some recommendations for our new stormwater or for some changes to that stormwater bylaw. So we have Charis and Tom and Joe Prandak, our building inspector is also going to join us now.
Justin Saviano.
And Justin, hello.
So we all know each other now.
Stormwater is, you know, one of our favorite topics. So we look forward to this discussion. It's a challenge, I think, for every town these days, at least in this area, as we have large storm after large storm after large storm coming through. So turn it over to who's starting?
I'll start and I want to make sure I have the clickers right. Okay. All right. So that was a good intro because it is the, an issue that a lot of towns or every town has to deal with, especially around this area. So we're here to discuss a summary of our current stormwater bylaw. It was effective in January twenty nineteen. This was approved at the October twenty eighteen town meeting. And clicker works. Good. So what procedures were in place prior to the bylaw is a typical question we receive. If the planning board, zoning board or conservation commission application required a site plan review. Before the bylaws in place, typically the engineering division would review that it meets the Massachusetts stormwater policy standards, which essentially is for, is usually for commercial larger sites. No net stormwater runoff the site from pre imposed conditions. There were some infiltration requirements as well as treatment. And there was this ten standards total. So the engineer would have to provide a checklist, including an operation maintenance manual. There was no requirement for a single family house or multi family house to provide a stormwater plan. In fact, I think some order policy require doesn't require anything other than five lots or more to meet the stormwater policy prior to our bylaw. The building department did suggest dry wells for new construction. So there was a time where without the bylaw, the building department was saying might as well put a dry well in, you know, neighbors are not happy about the runoff, you know, collected. Okay, so that was the bylaw adopted. So we had a new NIPD's permit issued in twenty sixteen. It was effective in twenty eighteen. And basically is to share the burden with the phosphorus and contaminant removals that we have to remove from our drainage system. Most effective ways through infiltration and it was determined that it's better to have like these new construction infiltrate their stormwater prior to being discharged into the town road system, which will actually eventually end up in the trails. So it's only for the first inch, which is pretty much what this stormwater policy requires for larger commercial. And that is to take the first flush, which is mostly the contaminants. It also helps a little bit with the stormwater mitigation from the runoff. So that one inch collected allows the town to have some capacity for for the smallest storm events.
We didn't used to think of one inch storms as small either, but yes, they are smaller now.
Okay, so how does it affect the common resident? So the trigger requirements are under the building permit applications. If a, an addition that's more than twenty five percent of the existing structure, collection of that roof from the addition must be collected for one inch. If it's a new construction, then the whole roof has to collect one inch of runoff and infiltrate into the property. So one inch, what is one inch? That is described as the total impervious area for the site for the area multiplied by one inch. That's the volume of the chambers that you need for your property. We're finding that less than ten percent over the last year observed are more than four thousand square feet of impervious area for for new constructions. So that that's a trigger in the bylaw as well that if a resident property is greater than four thousand square feet of impervious they must provide that there's going to be no impact to abutting properties pre imposed stormwater conditions.
Tom, could I ask a question there? Because that statement actually surprised me. I would have thought that between the house footprint and the driveway and walks that many of the houses that have been built in the last year would have been greater than four thousand square feet of impervious. Those are the components that go into it, right? Into the calculation?
Yes, correct. So of the reported that of the impervious area that we're seeing less than ten percent or four thousand. So we get about a hundred permits that trigger the stormwater permit each year. And we get about ten of them that are more than four thousand square feet. And these are smaller lots too. And they're right around the threshold of it too. I'm sorry, I'm confused. Small lots? Like ten thousand square foot lots. We're talking about the four thousand square foot of a house, right? Four thousand of impervious.
So the house footprint is some thousand square feet, right? And then the driveway and whatever adds to that. But the, what you're telling us is that by the time the house has taken up fifty percent of the lot and you add in the driveway, it's still coming out to less than four thousand square feet of impervious?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're seeing right now. And this is like a matter that we can look at to a little bit closer to make sure that people are calculating all these improvisers correctly. But we, we ran through a few of them just to double check and we're finding that they're up around. I mean, they're up around three thousand square feet, a bit more. So we're seeing a thousand square foot driveways plus twenty eight hundred square feet. Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Okay. Yes, Heidi.
Is that a four thousand square foot threshold? Is that something that we created? And if so, how? Or is this like a state requirement?
That is something that we created. And I'm not sure where they got the four thousand from. I think they found that was a good trigger for review, for an additional review. It doesn't actually say how to review it either. It just says that it can't impact the butters. So for for peak flow.
Okay.
So there could be properties that already have more than four thousand square feet. They add a twenty five percent addition. So are they impacted? Are they required to go with the pre imposed conditions or just treat stormwater off of that addition? So there's some, some clarity issues in the bylaw.
Okay. I know we want to move on, but I have one other question that I'm thinking about with this four thousand square feet number in mind. In our GIS system, does it have the capability to look at lots and say how much impervious it sees? So is that, could that function as a check for us?
Yes, we actually have GIS running, running those numbers. We'll have some probably more up to date numbers at the end of the year, but we have some for our stormwater fees that were.
All right, because I know, you know, in Wellesley from my job that we've seen pretty good. The GIS has done actually a quite good job of figuring out what the impervious area is. So it seems like it's a good check. But I, I just, that number surprises me that it's less than ten percent. So thank you.
Keep in mind, we're, we're drawn from a small pool. And these are just, these are permits only.
Yeah. Okay.
So what does the current review of the building permit applications entail relative to a storm bylaw? So if the bylaws triggered during building permit application, the applicant needs to show that they're collecting one inch of runoff from the roof. The bylaw indicates that the surveyor can provide the location to the, on the plot plan as to the proposed locations. So there's no other site plan review other than what would be required for planning board zoning board appeals or conservation commission application. The issuing authorities for the stormwater bylaw is the building department, ZBA, planning board and conservation commission. DPW handles the day to day administration and advisory opinions to the issuing authorities. I know the building department does also go out and they have a check as well. We have a street permit manager who also checks, but there is no scheduled times to inspect. They just check to make sure that, you know, if they see an excavation going on for a stormwater system, they check and they take photos. Anything in the review that might prevent issuing a building permit? And the answer is they need to show the one inch. That's a given. There are conditions where if the soils are poor, as indicated in some of our maps. There are conditions where if the soils are poor, as indicated in some of our maps, or if there's high groundwater. So there's another unclear condition uh that uh they can connect to the town's drainage system correctly. If the town's drainage system is not nearby, uh they can contribute to a fund uh that we haven't established.
Tom, can I just make one comment on that, which is that at some point when we talk about connections into the drainage system. The more people who connect directly into the drainage system, the more burden it goes into the town's drainage system. That's just one thing that we're thinking about as we're moving forward.
And that's a problem, right? And I I remember discussing this at the time that that out was put in there that that was problematic, so yeah. Thank you.
Uh, under the existing bylaws, what can the town require for builders for erosion control, prevent stormwater runoff? This is uh this is standard practice to require uh to provide erosion control. Uh, standard examples would be like straw waddles, silt fence, established vegetation burns uh in order to prevent runoff. If the builder is not complying with the uh with the permit. Or we have a complaint, uh the building commission can do a stop work order. Director of Public Works can issue a written order uh for the first offense and then it may issue a fifty dollar fine thereafter. If runoff is affecting conservation commission resource areas, uh the conservation commission can take corrective action as well. And if it's based upon a planning board or ZBA decision uh that requires a management system, uh they can take correction action as well. Existing bylaws include town oversight over builders, letting them off changing the grades of lot before they build. So anything under four thousand square feet. Is presumed compliant um if they have the one inch collected. There's no real information on the bylaw other than that. Again, as mentioned before, if they're if they trigger the four thousand square foot threshold. Uh, they they have to provide that they're not impacting their neighbors.
I was trying to remember, I thought at the time that we did the large house review, we had discussions about grade changes. I haven't, I didn't get a chance to go back digging in the bylaw, but none of that made it into the bylaw.
It's not part of the stormwater bylaw.
But is it part of? It's not in the zoning bylaw, right? I don't, I thought that was something that went in, but totally lots happened at that time, so.
All right, so we're near the end of our slides. Upcoming challenges, um, we have a lot of phosphorus to remove from our system. And uh, we have to take credit for it, um, so. So the town's Niptys requirements to improve stormwater quality um is part of our permit. And that's just going to continue to be uh looked at and. Uh, we have about four hundred thirty pounds of phosphorus removed, so and we buy in the next two years. So we uh the challenge would be to uh have uh have more BMPs installed throughout town and more homeowners triggering. The thresholds to prevent water off their property. I'm sorry, uh best management practice to treat stormwater, thank you.
Do we have any sense of what progress we've made on our permit with phosphorus removal?
So we're still in um still in the review process, so we still have a phosphorus, we just have the phosphorus control plan approved.
Is that available online or is that?
I believe it's online and our annual permit provides updates on the BMPs, other mechanisms that we've used through that period of time in order to remove phosphorus.
So part of the things we're doing with that is to investigate all this work that towns done over the last twenty plus years. And try to take credit for that, so one of the things that we need to do is provide operation maintenance to these sites as well. As identifying where they are, so there are uh public properties that we did um infiltration. We have uh like storm scepters and uh settling tanks and rain gardens and 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 wet and dry basins.
Excuse me, what's, what are common sources of phosphorus?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, leaves and fertilizers and. Animal waste. So the other, another challenge is a capacity constraints that we have in our town drainage system. And and the other item too is that uh we have developers continue to look for. Areas that are in flood sensitive and they may not be in a FEMA flood area, but they're lower areas near brooks and streams of wetlands or. They're trying to take advantage of lowering their basement foundation. You know, have and have ability to have some walkout or drive unders as well. So they're dealing with some challenges with us. Last slide I have is very non binding, just kind of preliminary suggestions that we're just throwing up. So one of the thoughts is to have a site plan review through the town engineering uh for see stormwater impacts. And actually check grade changes, impervious increases. Have the civil engineer uh for the site certify the proposed and as-built conditions. So adopting regulations is part of the bylaw. Uh, in order to give some more guidance, uh requiring some operation and maintenance requirements to be submitting. Uh, because that's, this is a challenge. We do have operation maintenance uh submit submittedals. However, uh they're just pieces of paper and nobody ever reviews them, so uh the homeowner doesn't see it. So there's got to be some education outreach, uh have you checked your uh dry well? Some people didn't even know where the dry wells were, that we've met on site in certain areas. Setting the thresholds um to trigger some more applicants, uh some more treatment prior to discharge. So those are the kind of some preliminary, it's probably a hundred more, uh but something we can follow up with when we start up our committee.
So we are just starting a stormwater bylaw revisit committee. Kevin is taking that one on, so thank you Kevin for joining that effort from the smart board.
Madam Chair, could I add that when we developed the bylaw, it was the intent to eventually uh issue regulations and the bylaw authorizes the board. To issue those regulations, I believe it's the board issues them, so um this is a natural time to look at the bylaw, but also to develop those regulations that. To help enact some of these recommendations that the DPW engineering staff.
My recollection is we might have gotten around to that, but I think the pandemic intervened.
It was exactly that, yes.
You know, this got kind of later much for a while and now we are back to it. But yeah, things, things changed temporarily. Heidi?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, I think this is all fantastic and um I really like these suggestions very much. But I do, I I just want to say, I think that it's confusing for residents to hear us refer to stormwater, which could mean. Like our Niptys requirements from the state, it could mean construction runoff, it could mean floodwater. And and stormwater capacity. So I I just wonder if there's a way to sort of separate these items out, especially for um the construction runoff that. We know that so many people are struggling with, because I I just think it um it confuses the whole issue and we we don't necessarily understand. Which kind of water we're talking about and which kind of water we're controlling with our bylaws.
So I I think um I completely agree. The initial stormwater bylaw was primarily exclusively to address the quality issue and not really to address the capacity issue. The capacity has sort of a tangential element. I think the, well, the original intent in bringing back um review of the stormwater bylaw was because we actually did a review with our consultant. And found that there were few areas that we were not compliant with our federal permit. We had to make some modifications to, including adding a new category for people who do uh more impervious surface, so add a patio or a pool. Right now, there isn't a trigger in the bylaw and we would um, we need a trigger in order to be compliant with our Niptys permit. I think the timing of that ended uh ended up overlapping with the flooding that we saw this um summer and this winter. And so it sort of brought a new and and having a new building commissioner as well as we've had discussions with about um what we can and can't enforce on builders. And I think it brought up the conversation of making the stormwater bylaw more inclusive. To address both stormwater capacity and stormwater quality. So I think the newer bylaw that we're hoping to come out of this committee with will have more enforceable and tangible. Expectations when it comes to both the quality and the capacity um when it comes to development.
And I think it will have broader applications, right, in addition, in terms of who is subject to the to the bylaw or the regulations. Anything else? Kathy?
I'd like to understand a little bit more about this one inch and how how it is that you know that they're collecting the one inch. I mean, and how does it actually get collected?
So as far as, so the building application is submitted and say they're doing a tear down in new construction. So we have the surveyor showing exactly how many square foot of impervious area. And then showing that the sizes of their cul texts are are, excuse me, chambers, underground chambers they're using. Meets the one inch volume requirement, so they usually show a few recharge locations. Throughout the site and indicate what size that they're using.
So these chambers, these are dry wells or what?
Dry wells, they're either, yeah, they're either. Yeah, they're a structure, it's they're either elongated or they look like a a manhole structure.
But eventually the water will filter down into the ground from this.
Uh, yes, they will go into the, yeah, it will go into the structure and there's an open bottom. And it'll infiltrate back into the into the ground.
It's a hypo, I mean, it's a model, right, it's an engineering model that they look at impervious surface and say, this is what you need to capture volume wise. The same way that the phosphorus removal that we have is also an engineering model that's based on certain processes we go through and then we do a calculation that says. How many pounds of phosphorus will you remove um to both?
Yeah, we're just looking at the static condition, so not infiltration capacity, so it's not really designed. The survey is just showing it as far as they meet the size requirement and that's that's all they're providing.
Just for a little further clarification, the underground structure could be referred to as a tank. So it's like a tank underground and then they take the down spouts that come off the roof in the gutters and they pipe those in directly into that tank. So the water's not running and flowing out into the street or to abutting properties.
When we had the flooding on August eighth, it is very unlikely based on the speed of rain that we received and the intensity. That those systems captured captured an inch of water because it was moving too fast for it to be collected. So again, it is a hypothetical model, so it's not necessarily mimicking real world conditions.
And and the other issue is that with the high groundwater table, the tanks are already full. So so you know, the to design a system, the the systems we're designing for the one inch. Probably isn't adequate for the rain we're experiencing today.
But it sounds like it was also designed more to capture the phosphorus or whatever, right? So it's like the, if you had a surface that was dry, that first rain is gonna take whatever's on it, right? And that's going to be dirtier, is this, I'm just putting it in my own Peter Wap language. So it's the dirtier stuff and that's what you want to particularly capture that and it gets filtered then from this tank and the dry well.
The ground.
It gets filtered in the ground, once it goes through the tank.
But it does not go theoretically, it's going into the tank and into the ground and not into the stormwater system. Carrying all that phosphorus and other dirty stuff that we do not want.
Yeah, no, just just a observation, there's so much unpacked in this, this is. Yes, and um, you know, I was counting how many times you said one inch collected, one inch collected. And it's like, it's sort of the panacea, and I don't think after we saw what happened in August and December and January. That that's sufficient and I think we really need to think that was nice, but we have to really.
It was a one inch for phosphorus removal, remember, not for capacity.
Anyway, so we were trying to pin on that there's some capacity issue, but this doesn't, it's not cutting the mustard. And so many times in these neighborhood tours, we saw um new construction built on a pedestal, like they engineered their problem, fine. But they just put it on to the neighbors too, and so I think looking forward, we need to address those as well.
Yes, I agree, yep.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Um, I I feel like we um have heard from a lot of residents who are really having trouble. With runoff from their new construction neighbor neighboring property. And I I did see in your presentation that there was a way that they can approach that and address it, but. Excuse me, I'm not sure that everyone understands that process. Or perhaps it's just not accessible, or perhaps we just can't enforce. Uh, the rules that exist, or maybe we need better rules to be in place to enforce. But I wonder if we can make it a little bit more transparent for people to um bring concerns to the building department.
I think it's also important to point out that that process is during construction. And not necessarily of a new build that has been finished and completed, um because I think that is. At least we've heard a lot of complaints is after. And again, it goes back to the pre and post conditions that um Tom was referring to, which again is an engineering model. Not necessarily reflecting real world conditions. But we certainly could make it clear if there are issues during construction. How, we we have the flooding dashboard, we could certainly um add to that if you have any concerns during a construction project, how to report that.
This is something good for the for the bylaw committee to to look at, it's like exactly where we've fallen short because. One of the points I was making is that if it's under four thousand square feet of impervious area, they do not. They're assumed to be in compliance if they're just collecting the one inch, so they don't have to do the pre and the post, uh so water conditions. So there are conditions that uh we've noticed that uh driveways are pointing into the neighboring uh properties. So we've reached out to the builder to or survey to change. So you're collecting that water and not discharging it to your neighbors, but sometimes it misses because it's not part of a permit procedure.
And sometimes it's just a grade change and oftentimes you don't know until long after the construction's finished. You know, getting a little dry spell and then, you know, some heavy rains in in the. The bylaw is not clear on what what we can do at that point, we we have no. No conditions that we can impose.
Well, I think it's good to have the committee and it's it's an appropriate time to go back and relook at these issues that are now clearer to us than they were. Back in twenty eighteen.
Much harder.
Okay, great, thank you very much for coming in, we appreciate it and um. We know that everybody's worked really hard on stormwater issues, i- independent of the Niptys and phosphorus. Um, and we know we have more work to go, so I'm going to say thank you in advance and we'll say thank you again and again and again, I'm certain. That brings us to um the next item. Which is the Great Plain Avenue quarter redesign. Our folks from GPI have been here for a while, so I want to thank you for your patience on this evening. Honorary member Karis?
Yes, you're on the second one now.
Pull up the chair by all means. We're glad you all are here.
Thank you.
People will recall that at the last meeting, uh there were a couple of these presentations and I think this is the final one that we're seeing of the set this evening. And am I turning it over to John?
Yes.
Hello, John.
Hello, thank you, thank you for indulging us uh tonight and accommodating our schedule. So we have a presentation here and and I just want to comment on our our cover shot here first before I get into the introductions. So we had looked at the pre-signal for you folks downtown. So we had looked at the pre-signal for you folks downtown a couple of years ago. We we monitored the traffic from a drone up here. And when we did that, one of the things we noticed is just looking at the, looking down that corridor, you know, it looks like a highway going down there. It's it's basically all pavement. It's four lanes of pavement plus two lanes of parking. That does not look very inviting for a a little quaint downtown area. So that's why we put that up there on the.
So we applaud you for doing a reset.
The title says it all, reimagining what Great Plain Avenue is. For those that don't know, know me, I'm John Diaz with GPI. I'm the Vice President there. I run the Innovation Group, but which kind of does a little bit of everything, GIS, drones, wide hour surveys, all the fun stuff. But before that, I had 20 years running the traffic group. So traffic is my background, planning traffic and and that type of operations.
I'm Carolyn Radish and my background is in transportation, planning and engineering. And I would be the project manager on this project. And I play that role in GPI. I work closely with our engineering team doing exactly this kind of conceptual planning and design in the, I would say, in the conceptual design phase of the the street design. And that's the time when you have a lot of public engagement and where you need to have sort of the planning expertise to kind of work with the community come to a design that we can then finalize design and build. So I'm looking forward to doing that again. I worked with John on the Community Way. If you think I look familiar but can't quite place my. It was on Community Way, so yeah.
I'm Ron Hedrick. I'm a Senior Landscape Architect, Assistant Vice President. I head up our Landscape Architecture Group. We work on all kinds of municipal projects as well as state projects, doing things like rail trails, parks and multiple streetscapes.
With our current highway, there's not a lot of landscape there, but yes, so he has a big job.
And um. I'm Zach Rossmuth. I'm the Urban Mobility Team Leader with in our Highway Group at GPI. And I've been with GPI all over two years now. Formerly, I was with the City of Boston Public Works Department as the most recently as the Chief Design Engineer. So worked with a lot of projects in kind of, you know, downtown areas like this, actually worked with GPI on some similar type projects like this, so definitely understand the nuances of dealing with, you know, parking and bikes and trees and stormwater management and all that type of stuff. So excited about a potential to work on a project like this.
And more importantly, the the maintenance and the buildability of it, so that as well, yes. So basically, uh, what we want to do tonight is go through, we have two or three projects that are very similar in nature to this, have a lot in common with that, talk about that. Talk about how we're going to approach the the project. There's there's a lot going on out there. We spent a lot of time looking at the surveys that that you folks did and the DPW did. You know, obviously the top three there were were bikes, sidewalks and pedestrians. Unfortunately, it got 76 feet. You can't accommodate them all, so you have to do something out there and we'll we'll talk about our approach to that when we get to the concept. And then the last part will be the the initial concepts. So with that, I'm going to let Carolyn go through and talk about the the projects she was involved with mostly on on these projects that are quite similar.
Yeah, I wanted to just review just a little bit of some of our direct project experience and the relevance, what we've learned from it and what we bring to this particular project. So Ruggles Street in Boston, recently constructed, you can see there, we have protected bike lanes, wider sidewalks, traffic calming, making it just much more safe and inviting for the most vulnerable users, people on feet, people on bikes. And you know, this project has green infrastructure. We did true preservation. We had some changes to the parking, so you know, all of that came into developing this design. In terms of the public engagement process, which worked here, is we had a series of open houses. And you know, I feel that people are really busy and we need to be mindful of people's time. So the the open houses were structured, you know, to bring people in, give them an update and, you know, give them something that they could give us input on that we could use to go forward and and advance the design. So that was, that worked very successfully. You know, every project in every community is different, so you know, we will work out public engagement with you, but that worked out quite well. We're also working on, I should say, obviously that was completed a couple of years ago. We're working currently on the reconstruction of State Street in downtown Boston. So State is, you know, you look at the State House. And so again, we're looking at, you know, reallocating the space within the right of way for bikes, for pedestrians. You have, you know, a lot of retailers, so you have loading. And not parking as much on this particular street, a lot of loading parking and short term parking. And then introducing a bike element, very constrained right of way. We have a pinch point there that's like 35 feet. So you know, challenging and a lot of stakeholders. And so this design also, you know, we're using, we're, we are getting wider sidewalks. That's very important. There's a lot of pedestrians. And a protected bike lane, you know, traffic calming, green infrastructure, accessibility is very important, parking and loading changes. You know, in a in a situation like this where you have a lot of different stakeholders, the retailers, visitors, people that work downtown. So in terms of public engagement, we did several things. One thing that we did is a pop up on the street where we, you know, had boards on the street so that we could get a lot of people. That was very successful. Again, being very mindful of people's time and, you know, getting input that way. Also working with stakeholders, so a project like this from beginning from concept through to construction, you know, we're going to be needing to work with the stakeholder group. You have done some construction on Great Plain Avenue, so I know you know this, but you know, working with those stakeholders from the beginning all the way through is going to be important to have a stakeholder group. There may be other civic groups that may be involved also in the stakeholder engagement process. I'm going to talk a little bit about our process in a minute. And then one other project that we just wanted to highlight is we did reconstruction on Route Nine in Hadley. And the reason why we bring this up is because for this project, we evaluated three versus four travel lanes. And I think that when you, yes.
Two.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's two lanes now. No, we were going to put three. Okay, one travel lane in each direction and a two-way turn lane. That's what three is. So one in each direction with travel lanes and four lanes. And so when you talk about, you know, lane reduction, which we talk about on projects when we don't have enough space, you know, I think there's a, there's kind of a a gut feeling of like, oh, my goodness, that we can't possibly lose any capacity, but capacity is largely governed at the intersections by the signals. And in our analysis, and this is for DOT and this is a you know, a road that has much higher volumes than Great Plain Avenue, we found that the difference in delay for vehicles in the peak hour, so just the peak hour, ranged from 14 seconds to 35 seconds. That was the difference between one lane in either direction with a two-way left turn lane and two lanes in each direction. So you know, that's, you know, that's kind of the order of magnitude and the kind of thing that we need to look at here when we talk about a lane reduction. So it is some more delay. It is in the peak hour, there's 24 hours in the day. So these are kind of the balancing that we look at when we're thinking about the the public right of way. In terms of our public engagement approach, you know, we've worked with you a little bit. I, the sense is in person is important, you know, virtual also. We definitely want on a project like this that has so much interest for the community, it's your community's living room, it's where people come together. There's a lot of people there that are not going to be that interested in going to meetings, so we want to have a whole range of things that we can do to get people involved. You know, we would definitely suggest a pop up. We're going into a time of year where we can be outside. You know, it'd be fun to be outside and just talk to people on the street, talk to them, how they use it, what they want to see. Open houses, again, I think are respectful of people's time. You know, a lot of times there will be little issue areas along the street that we'll want to get people's input in terms of the design. So those are a good way to go also. And you know, we want to make it as fun as possible. There's different things that we have done to, you know, engage people. Food, this one was held with a farmer's market. You know, there's just like a lot of different types of activities that can bring people in. We want to work through stakeholder groups through the process from the beginning to the end. I don't know if some of your existing stakeholder groups from past phases of this might exist, but definitely some of the retailers and, you know, some town staff obviously together, working through this process. And then not everyone can make a meeting. Not everybody wants to make a meeting. And so for that, we have a really good, you know, online set of tools that we use. Like we had with Community Way, we had a page, we had online surveys, we had the results of the surveys posted, we have meeting notes posted. We have, you know, even sometimes we do a story map, which is a GIS tool that you can sort of run through the basic information to help people understand the underpinnings of the design, what the traffic volumes are, what the analysis showed. And we like to show that graphically and make it intuitive for people to understand that. So we have a lot of tools to keep people involved. A couple of other things that, you know, we can consider would be, you know, taking a field trip. Let's, you know, go to Ruggles Street. Public Works can talk to Zach about drainage and snow maintenance and, you know, all that fun stuff. And kind of try it out. And then, you know, board members, interested members of the public, stakeholder committee, whatever. So it might be interesting to do that. You know, another thing is considering implementing a pilot. So we implemented a pilot on State Street. That's the picture of that here. And so, you know, that's, you do that with temporary materials. And then we monitored, you know, before and after traffic volumes, travel time. You know, we can visualize, you know, we can see a lot of things in the ground when you put a pilot in place. So that's, that's something to consider. That could be done, you know, fairly cheaply with, you know, paint and flex posts and, you know, a lot of outreach in terms of changes in travel patterns, something to consider. You know, and we can help you with other support tools, flyers, postcards, social media posts, you know, whatever you need to do on the social media.
I just want to jump in real quick on that, on that pilot option. The other advantage of that pilot option is that you can, you can get that out there relatively quickly, again, just basically pavement markings, get the public response, but in the meantime, you can be going through a fund, looking for different funding and have something in place. This is a great type of project for a tip project. It's a downtown, it's an MBTA community, it's bed, bed, it's ped bike accommodations. I mean, this is, talk about complete streets, this, this is it. So you could have something out there built in like three or four months and be searching and getting on the tip, which obviously you know is like a five year process, but you can still have something in place there. So just something to think about with the with the pilot option.
It check, this project would check a lot of boxes. But you would be looking at, you know, temporary materials for that time period as well. So, you know, that's a, that's a consideration. So in terms of our design approach, so we developed a conceptual design. We went primarily from what you told us in in your surveys for the priorities for the use of the right of way. And so we've sort of extracted it a little bit and this is the underpinning and why we made the decisions we made for our conceptual design. So prioritizing the multimodal experience, really important in downtown, you know, MBA, MBTA station. You know, the MBTA community's housing bill is all about walking and biking to the transit station. So, you know, you want to really strengthen those networks, walking and biking. We want to support the businesses, you know, the downtown is about the businesses. And also emphasize safety for all users, bikes, pedestrians and also transit riders. So just in terms of prioritizing the pedestrian experience, you know, downtowns thrive on foot traffic, so we need to do the best we can for them in terms of making it a nice, attractive environment, but also safe. Which is why we lean to dropping a travel lane. Because, you know, there's some safety issues with really wide street and also it's it's just not as comfortable for the pedestrian experience. So we want to welcome all people, you know, we make it a people-first design, prioritize the pedestrians and improve the streetscape. You know, we want to support the downtown businesses. So, you know, on-street parking does support walkability. It does sort of buffer pedestrians from the street. It does have people going in and out. And so, and and it's important for the businesses themselves. So, you know, we preserved on-street parking, however, we do know that you have done your, we have read your downtown parking study and we understand that you do, you're lucky, that you do have these parking reservoirs that with better signage, you can direct more people to. So what that means is that we can selectively repurpose parking in areas to, you know, create active uses such as dining and wider sidewalks. So we would look at that as we were going along. And sort of, you know, that's something that we would want to work through in the design process. There's also, you know, and this, we come across this in all the downtowns we've worked in is there's, you know, a lot of different uses for the curb in a downtown area. There's loading, you know, there's short term food pickup, especially now post COVID. And so, you know, sort of managing the curbs with regulations is something that we would want to look at. You definitely don't want people parking there for a long time. You want high turnover. But we have P- Prado zones or pickup drop off, so those are, you know, really quick, 15 minutes run in, get your food and come out. And so that, that is something that we can consider as well to make the zones work better. There may be valet, maybe an opportunity for valet, given you have so much, you know, back parking that there may be some user restaurant or hospitality type of business that would want to provide valet. So that's, you know, that's all things that we can talk about in terms of, you know, managing the curbs effectively. Whoops, wow, sorry about that. Bicycles, just a couple of words on bicycles. So for a street that has this traffic volume, separated bike lanes are the, you know, the best practice and the safest practice. So, you know, that's sort of a given. You know, a bicycle lane without a buffer or a share would not be appropriate on the street. We want to get, you know, eight-year-olds to 80-year-olds is kind of what we say. And so, you know, to give that all ages and abilities type of experience, then, you know, we need to have the protected bicycle lanes going through Great Plain Avenue. And this is such a key point of connection for the community as a whole. It's really important to get that element of the network in there. Also, bicycles make streets safer for all users. It makes it safer for pedestrians and also vehicles as well. It keeps everybody in their place. It kind of calms traffic. And so there's a lot of benefits to putting in protected bicycles. And, you know, to the extent that people bike downtown, they're not using parking and they're not adding to congestion. So all of those things go together. I will say honestly, I've never had a project that didn't have pushback when we put bike lanes in because a lot of our communities are still building their network and people say, why are we parking bike lanes? Nobody bikes. But the reason is the network isn't in place. And like you can, and even in Cambridge and even in Copenhagen, there's arguments about bike lanes. But, you know, a lot of people bike in those communities because the network is in place and it's safe. You know, you can feel safe biking in that area and that's sort of our goal. And and that has to be clear, you know, as we start, you know, what the objectives are for the reset. And then, you know, land, landscape and streetscape, very, very important to give a sense of place, that unique identity for for downtown medum. And also, you know, that amenity is, you know, the overview shot showed, it's very, very hard out there. And so landscaping and street trees in particular do a heroic job of, you know, just making it so much nicer out there. You know, the the upper pictures are the new sort of technology, the kind of black grid you see there are these tree root cells. This is a relatively new innovation with street trees that help to make the trees live longer. So your trees that were planted now, you know, were planted in very limited area for their roots and they struggle. Adding these tree root cells, and this was a retrofit for that elm tree that's in the lower photo. So that gives a cultural environment that helps the trees thrive. And so we can implement that. That also absorbs stormwater. All that area with good dirt can also absorb stormwater and that is those cells, those, that structure is supporting the sidewalk. So these are new things that we can integrate into the downtown to help make the street trees thrive better. You know, other green infrastructure elements that will include, you know, porous paving in some places, other types of things, your stormwater, we just talked about your regulation. So, you know, definitely will improve somewhat in the design over what it is now. And then, you know, there are existing materials that are in place. And so, you know, we would talk to Public Works about how they feel about the materials. Are they lasting well? Do you want to continue with that? We sort of understand that there is something in place. Certainly the Town Hall Park is lovely. And so we would want to have a consistent look with that as well. So that's our approach to the landscape and streetscape element. So that's our approach to the landscape and streetscape elements. Just, you know, a review again with four lanes and pedestrians and how, you know, that doesn't make for a great pedestrian environment, really wide pedestrian crossings. The pedestrians are exposed in the street for a long time. Where you have two lanes going in one direction, you have the potential for the double threat crash where, you know, one car will stop because they see the pedestrian, but this car doesn't see, it's in the blind spot. You know, the pedestrian can't see the car. So, you know, bringing down the number of travel lanes as they're going through the downtown is, is very big for pedestrian safety. Dawn's going to talk about traffic.
I had 20 minutes to talk about traffic. So we did, you know, honestly, traffic in the downtown, we can't do this without looking at traffic. It's, it's a main thoroughfare through town. You know, one of the concerns was, well, if we, if we do anything major, we're going to divert traffic off to the side streets. You're fortunate that you really, the, the network of streets there doesn't really have really parallel streets without a significant effort of getting there. So unless, unless we did something really dramatic and basically banned cars from it, I don't think you're going to get that much of diverted traffic. And as Carolyn said, like that study in Hadley, it was Route 9 in Hadley, and we're talking 30, 30 seconds. You know, it's an additional signal cycle, maybe you have to sit through during the peak hour. So that issue I don't think is, is too much of a concern. But the, you know, the bigger concern, I, I don't know what the status of the, the grant, where they were looking at the signal timings, where that stands right now. But, you know, you do have the two signals there and of course you got the, the train there. We, we did take a very high level look at the operations. And I think by, by reducing the, the lanes, as long as we keep the turn lanes, particularly at Chapel Street and, and add a, a, an eastbound left turn lane to offset the westbound left turn lane. And then keep the, the single through lanes. So that's, that's the biggest congestion point. We, we don't encourage people out of town, but the Church Street intersection there, we all know that, that that is a bypass out of town, particularly if you're going from one side to the other and don't need to go downtown. So that, that does give you a little bit of that relief valve off of, off of having to continue down for Great Plain. So obviously when we get, get into the design, you know, we'll, we'll look at the, the new analysis that was done. If it's done, compare that, look at the, do the traditional traffic signal analysis and all that. But from a very high level, it doesn't look like going to reducing that extra through lane is really going to create that much of a significant impact. Obviously it's going to be some impact. One thing that, that we, we did want to talk about briefly, and we talked about the parking and parking study. And you do have such a vast amount of parking in town. The problem is, I mean, I live here and I don't know where to park. I just found out the other day I can park in Midham Heights for the train. I didn't even know that was a, there was a, there was a station, there, there was a parking lot there. There's no signs, there are no signs anywhere. So when we did this in Nashville and New Hampshire, where we did a overall ways, wayfinding project for them. We had Nicole in our office put the, the needle graphic in here. But this just gives you kind of a perspective of different character of signs and, and size and signs. And you don't have to do a whole thing, but just some simple banners with pointing to the parking. And as Carolyn mentioned, you know, longer term parking for the restaurants in particular, you know, those people should be in the back lots. And, you know, the trade-off of a, a restaurant may want to pay a high school kid to go park cars and do a valet service to get six or seven tables out and give up a couple of spaces. So better integration of the parking into the downtown with some kind of wayfinding, whether it's part of this project or a separate project, I think will go a long way for the, for the downtown. So for, for our design, let's see if this, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. So, go ahead.
All right.
So, so this is just a fly-through, it's a very preliminary model. But this is the existing situation coming up, going past the railroad tracks right here, coming up to, to Chapel Street. And you can just see, I mean, obviously it doesn't have the street trees that are there, but it's a very, you know, pavement centric, really does not look like a downtown area. It looks like you're going through basically, you know, this could be Route 9 out in Hadley. Yeah, yeah, well, we're going to put some zombies in there, just. Yeah. No, we want to go with a good one.
Oh, sorry.
There we go.
There we go.
No, come on. All right.
I'm sure we're all ready.
Yeah. So this was just, you know, something of what it could be. So. Well, just imagine you're having down. All right. So, you know, now picture this with, with additional street trees, with, with, you know, restaurant tables out there. Again, just having, having some of these buffer areas where, where you have some green space. It, it just presents a different feel. The crossings are a lot, a lot shorter. The pavement, you know, is newer and better, and it's just feels more like what you want a downtown to, to look like. So, you know. There we go. So what, what we're looking at in terms of the, the, the concept, so you basically have 76 feet building to building, generally along the corridor. So, you know, again, you'd like to have wider sidewalks, you'd like to keep the parking, you'd like to have bike accommodations out there. You can't do it all in 76 feet. So our approach again was to, to take the travel lane and then divide up what's, what's left. So to, to do that, to, to really provide that protected bike, you need to separate the bikes from the, 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 the vehicles. So what the approach we took in again, this can be, this is just a, our, our first pass at it, but would be to use the parking to provide the buffer for the, for the bikes. And you could do two things, you could, this, this shows it with the, the flexible stanchions there to separate it. And that could be a short-term option. You could build that up and have that raised and keep the bikes at the road level, or you could bring the bikes up to the, the sidewalk level. Obviously there's maintenance involved with that. I'm sure DPW has, you might not be able to plow five feet, you might have to go six or seven feet for that. Those are the types of things we'd, we'd have to work out. But that's, those are the two concepts that we generally looked at. And again, what's, what's nice is the interchangeability of, of these, where you could take some of those parking spaces, use them for, for the restaurant seating. As opposed to if you build the sidewalk all the way out there, now you've committed that you, you're not going to have the parking there. So, so the, using as the parking space gives you that kind of flexibility to do both. The other thing that, that we can look at is, you know, in some areas, you don't, maybe you don't need the parking on both sides. So we could do parking on one side. But this was just a general look.
Make the sidewalks wider.
Yeah, and make those sidewalks wider down the whole corridor. So I did want to mention this because we are working on, on the, the quiet zone. And, and with the, with the quiet zone in place, that, that won't impact what we have to do out here. There, there's two options of treatments that we can do for the quiet zone. One would be the, just a, a medium barrier with the gates that are out there. That's the 75 feet there, that could be just the flexible mediums, or we could potentially take the parking and do a raised median there. If we didn't want to do that, we do want to put the gates in, that's just a gate system. So what we have to do for the quiet zone doesn't, isn't going to impact, you know, we have to have some big industrial looking grade crossing out there. Whatever we, whatever we do, this design will govern what the quiet zone looks like, not the other way around. So this, these are the two options. So this was kind of the, the first pass, this is all just pavement markings basically out here. So, you know, it's, it's what you could do out there now. We kept the crossings pretty much the same at the big intersections. And then, you know, this would be the kind of built up one. And again, you see the cycle tracks are a different color, those could be raised or at street level. Make the crossings more formal, four-way crossings instead of the scramble that's out there with actually designated crosswalks, so it doesn't feel like it's just this vast crossing area. And it, it shortens up the crossing area as well by having that, but that buffer for the, the bikes there. And I think that's, that was, that was basically how we looked at it.
We're very excited, it's a great project. And, and, you know, we'd love to work with the community on that with you.
Questions?
I, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate in terms of the engagement that you recognize that not everybody wants to come to a meeting. You know, so I think that, you know, people are busy. And I think, you know, we want to make sure to get the in, the input of all kinds of people. You know, not just the sort of small subgroup that might, you know, feel motivated to show up at a meeting, so.
You got the perfect place for like the Saturday pop-up, you know, right downtown there.
Absolutely. Yeah, and those are a lot of fun also to do that. It's nice to talk to people one-on-one, we get a lot more intel that way.
Thank you all for being here. What I'm thinking about the trees in that urban heat island effect. Yes, how would you say the new kind of way that their direction that we're heading was the way that it absorbs stormwater in comparison to the trees that are passing that are put out there? What's the average in that's greater in life, you know, and not dying?
So years ago, when, when I first got out of school, they used to say the average, and I think they would still say this, the average life of a street tree is about seven years. Because we used to put them in a little four-by-four box.
Right, that's what we know.
Yeah, so, so I think, and, and they used to, they didn't realize they needed more soil, they, they needed more water. And, and I think where we've come full circle now is we try to give them as much room, so put the right tree in the right space and give it as much soil as you can. Use these type of systems or, or different technologies that are out there to give them the soil they need that still supports the hardscape above it. And then capture water, grab that water and give it to the trees. So, so put it into the ground, and that's with stormwater in general. Usually if you can capture it and keep it local is really the approach. So I think in a lot of the projects we're working on now, we're trying to capture rainwater, capture street water, get it in the ground quickly and, and, and let the trees have it. So, so I, I brought some numbers down here, like as an average, like 300 for a small tree cubic feet, 600 for a medium tree and 1,000 are sort of like rules of thumb. So you, you start to think about 1,000, a thousand cubic feet for one tree is like a 20 by 20 area that you need to really give it. And that's the, that's been the thing about those old trees where like they got pot bound essentially. So as we evaluate this, that's what we're trying to do, is give you more trees to give the shade, to help reduce those heat island effects that people, experts are saying are going to be in, you know, high 90s and some places up in the hundreds, particularly in a location like this, it's all pavement.
Yeah, I don't know if we know exactly the number of years, but I can tell you the trees that we were looking at in that picture with the elm trees, that they have been there for, you know, a couple decades now. You know, like I said, they were retrofitted with the silver cell. And that has been, I'm going to guess, you know, it's been probably close to 10 years. But they're thriving, they're still growing, so it's really good. And, you know, Great Plain Avenue does have a south-facing side of the street, right? So like trees are, you know, going to be really, really welcome in the summer and help with the urban heat islands, so.
Thank you, it was a great presentation. I think the, the animation shows we do rectilinear really, really well in this town. The line tonight was the downtown's thrive on foot traffic. I think that's an important lesson. And I think that's what we're trying to achieve.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say quickly that when we started looking again at this downtown redesign, I remember distinctly bringing up bike lanes on the sidewalk because my son had just started at Northeastern University. And I see that that is your project, so I just wanted to compliment you because I think it really enhances the area and really drives home that point that you made. It's a, biking is a chicken and egg problem, right? People don't want to bike until there's a safe place to do it.
Right.
Exactly. It's a good series. Thanks.
So I'm just back from a couple of weeks in Valencia, Spain.
Nice.
Which has a massive network that is, well, completely designed for bikes and pedestrians. And I, you know, I just, I'd stand at all these street corners as we were walking everywhere and say to my husband, this is such an amazing job syncing all these traffic lights between the bikes and the pedestrians and the vehicles. Everybody was perfectly safe in their lane the way it was designed. But, but it is absolutely attributed to the challenge of you need to get enough in place that people can use it realistically.
Yeah.
So that it can happen. And I, you know, I was not here last week. I, I did watch last week's presentations as well. But I think my frustration with this is because of that, I wish that we had taken a look at a bigger footprint to think about circulation almost first.
Oh, yeah.
Because that might have unlocked some other opportunities for how we would think about this. But it's all really helpful to have this much on the table. It is really important that we make a step function improvement in our support for other modalities in town. And that's critical for this board to help make happen.
And to that point, I mean, just because we're looking at the Great Plain half-court, it doesn't mean we can't look from a bigger picture. Honestly, design and fund at this point, but certainly, you know, I mean, coming down Chapel Street, there's issues there, you know. And, and so, I mean, we can look at from a high level what that can look like so that maybe in two years, it's a Chapel Street project. So, you know, I don't want to, if we're looking at this, I don't want to just put the blinders on and look down Great Plain. We do need to expand that and kind of look at that whole triangle as, as an option. I mean, even internally, we talk like, oh, could you do a one-way thing? And it was like, well, that's getting a little crazy. But, but, you know, it's, there are options that you could do there that, you know, if we design this correctly, you could implement those in the future.
Well, I think this could be important to implement something that doesn't close off opportunities down the road.
Yeah.
So absolutely critical. Anything else? Are we good for tonight? We will have more discussion, I know, on this going forward. So I'm grateful to you for coming in and presenting your ideas this evening. And we are very much looking forward to a downtown that supports everybody, where everybody can feel safe, however they are choosing to be downtown. And we hope to have a downtown that not everybody just drives through.
Right.
That's the biggest thing.
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Chair, can I move the consent on your point?
That would be marvelous. Do I hear second? I would say all in favor, but I can't say that. So Heidi?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes, Kevin?
Hi.
Marcus?
Hi.
And the chair says yes. All in favor, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Town Manager's Report, and she has a number of items for us. Thank you, Paris Honorary Member.
As the High Chair said, this is the antipenultimate of the
Annual Town Meeting Warrants. We do have one last opportunity to make a change on the 26th of March. That, that will include the final budget as voted from, by the Finance Committee in its article, which is not in there yet. We will be meeting with the Quiet Zone Working Group next week, as I did provide you with a status update. We don't believe the number in the warrant that's been carried for several years is the number for design. But just that one number, I think, just have a whole committee together and look at it one more time with a consultant to put that number in on the 26th. Also in this version, the bylaw article, which the Committee to Study the Town Charter and the Bylaw met at 5:30, which included Kathy and Mary Ann and several others, did recommend that item, so that is as recommended. And there was a slight change to Article 40, which is the general bylaw change to the Technology Advisory Board, which would be necessary where we do town meeting to approve the consolidation of the municipal and school IT. So that, there's a slight change to that because the Technology Advisory Board met last week and asked for a couple of non-substantial tweaks, which we recommend to you. So there, this is the version that's very close to being done. The meeting on the 26th will be the last possible opportunity. And I believe unless we find, you know, the stray comma or period, there would be no changes other than that. But we would ask you to, to vote that on the 26th because we are printing, we're sending to the printer on the 28th. So that's, that's the final option. We will be finishing the article information between now and the, the meeting on the 26th.
Any questions? Hopefully the warrant is starting to look familiar to people at this point. We've had a chance to read it a few times, but reading article information that's there is welcome if you have feedback at this point in time.
Madam Chair?
May I ask a question? Actually, it's just a request, really, not a question. There are several articles, for example, number thirty-two and thirty-three, that reference transferring funds from prior town meeting articles. Some of them are quite old, like Article forty-seven of the two thousand seventeen Annual Town Meeting. And I guess I'm just, since I think most folks aren't going to know what that project was, what they voted for at that time, I'm wondering if we can just include detail on where that money was previously allocated, and then maybe that could be in the article information, it doesn't have to be in the text of the article, but just so that town meeting members who maybe previously voted in two thousand seventeen but don't have a copy of that warrant or don't have the time to do that kind of homework, will know what they're reallocating.
Yes, it certainly, and it's our practice to reallocate toward similar items, and in the case, I believe this is the one of them you're looking at is the sewer main items that were allocated for sewer main projects that where the balances need to be reallocated by town meeting, we save them up for other construction projects. So certainly a statement to that effect, and then, you know, we can certainly, either in the article information or in a handout, put the exact ones. But if there's only a few, there's no reason not to, so. It would be helpful to have a vote, just so that everything's, we know that this is the warrant, and then the last one will be the twenty-sixth.
All right. Let me make the vote.
Is there vote language in here somewhere?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to amend the two thousand twenty-four Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second.
Any more discussion? Marcus?
Hi.
Kevin?
Hi.
Kathy?
Sorry. Hi.
I'm real excited, Kathy.
Hi.
The chair votes aye.
There you go. All right, great. Next, it sounds like we need to open a special town meeting warrant.
We need to actually call for the special town meeting? And to vote, even though we always have it on the second Monday, we should be calling for it, and to vote to open the warrant. I would note that basically we continue to negotiate with the two unions that are here. If we think we're close, we could probably take these off at the next meeting when you close it. It gives us an extra week sometimes, that that can be really helpful. So those are items that may or may not be on the next version. And then the next three are, we have not populated them yet, any changes to the operating budget in sewer and water, which we do expect to have some line item changes between accounts on those. You'll recall that last year, we withdrew the intersection improvements required for the Children's Hospital permit. We'll be following up with Mastot and, you know, making sure where their recommendation is, and if it is not aligned with our recommendation, we will have a new recommendation for you on where those monies were spent. I think we talked briefly at the last meeting, the Finance Committee had asked that the town owned land surveys, which had been out and then were in, made more sense out, so, by which I mean out of the operating budget of the department number, of course. So we agree with that recommendation. We do have a couple unpaid bills of the prior year, which we'll have a presentation for you on the next meeting. As we noted, we are proposing to appropriate for auditorium upgrades, which is the code compliant and the Newman Design. Moving into the special actually makes it faster because the special closes on the same night. I believe this is the article, they'll be seeking a emergency preamble, so that that work could start very quickly. The article, you may recall, last year, we now have a new method by which we have to appropriate the PEG or Public Education Cable Access Fund. So this is, we expect this to be an annual article, and we'll have the amount for you at the next meeting. And then we are proposing a rescinding of debt, the very last balance of the Sunita Williams Elementary School, so.
Would we expect the PEG article to move into the regularly into the annual warrant in the future?
It's a complicated process. I, the design, like just like when they changed them, we couldn't have the money go directly to the cable provider. So we can only appropriate what we actually have in the bank. So the special town meetings give us that extra time that should we receive the payments from the cable providers that we would have the most up-to-date number to put in there. It's, and it's probably going to be necessary, that you're going to see this article twice a year, because we may have to show up in in a fall special town meeting.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, this is an article that probably will never work in the annual.
Okay, glad I asked, thank you. Is this one of the ones that's in the Modernization Act, or did they not take this one up?
They did not take this one up.
Future. Future modernization.
Future modernization.
And the other question I have, the one related to town surveys. Do we have a time period where we think we would actually finish surveying all the town land in some number of years?
They do have a tenure plan. It would depend on whether we buy more land or we want to use more land, or there's, you know, something that needs to get done, so.
Things could change, but I'm just wondering if things sort of stayed, is this a forever article, or would it be an article that might only come back occasionally?
Certainly once the backlog is complete, and there are, there are some parcels that arguably are never going to be developed. But, you know, certainly it's a sense that we should know what we own and where it is.
Correct. Okay, great. Other questions? Heidi, anything? No? If there aren't any other questions, then I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair?
I move that the board call for a special town meeting and vote to open the warrant for the May thirteenth, twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four Special Town Meeting.
Second.
Anything else? Last call? All right, then we will move to a vote. Heidi?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
The next item is a follow-up from your prior meeting to create the composition in charge of the Climate Action Committee. And at the meeting, there was a suggestion that it might be very useful to have the youth member vote, a voting member. It is our practice to have boards and committees that are an odd number, and I propose then to add a member of Green Needham, which actually having that member could help us in terms of some of the grant funding opportunities that we would be looking for, so.
Seems like a win-win.
Yes, thanks, Heidi.
Makes for a large committee, but, all right. Any questions about the changes there?
No questions, just, I think it'll be, I think a good idea to kind of empower the youth and have them have a vote that matters and that counts towards, you know, what we're doing here as a town that's going to affect them more than, it'll probably affect a lot of us. So, thank you for the suggestion, Heidi, appreciate you.
All right, if we are good with this charge and composition at this point, then I would welcome a motion.
Sure, Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the charge and composition of the Climate Action Committee.
Second. Any discussion? If not, Kevin?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Marcus?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. All in favor. Next, the parking meter policy, another follow-up.
So we were developing this street parking fee waiver program, right at the same time we were developing the flag protocol, and as we talked about, the concern is that if we allow anybody to put up any flag, that we would have to put up all flags. And I think as the board rightly pointed out, the same thing is true for the parking meters, which makes perfect sense. So rather than really an enabling policy, this is a clear statement on the part of the board that we don't do this, so that when we're asked, we can say, this is the policy of the board, is that there are no decorations on these meters, and there's no biops on these meters. Thank you for your input. I think it'll be just a clarifying policy that will be helpful for anybody who asks.
In these contentious times, it feels in some ways like a loss, but in other ways, I think it's a decision we won't regret, so that's a good thing.
Yeah, like I know the Alzheimer's group used to decorate them, and even History Center Museum wanted to do some, but this is a clean, I think we just have to make it clean and fair, straight across the board.
Then I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to approve the street parking fee waiver and support infrastructure display policy, SB Admin dash zero one zero.
Second.
Any more discussion? Heidi?
Yes.
Marcus?
Yes.
Kevin?
Hi.
Kathy?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Next item, just an update, a regular update on our American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding. We're not asking for any changes to the budget at this time, just to let you know that we are heading into the home stretch. All of the funds have to be spent by the end of this calendar year. As I know I would be asked, there's approximately six hundred and seventy-eight thousand of this funding that's actually uncommitted. And one of the big items is that the contract for the town reservoir cleanup, which we're holding two million dollars for, that contract is not yet finalized, we are still waiting on some permitting. But based from your last meeting, we do have an encumbrance of two point, just about two point four million for the sewer project. So we are, we did include the report to the county, we are working with the county to reallocate any funds, it's not a given, there are other communities in the county that can ask for these funds, but we're hoping to reallocate anything that doesn't get spent on the other projects to that sewer interceptor, which, as you know, is a very offensive project that's going to take us many years to finish. And so because that project is bid on a linear foot basis, we can literally keep going a couple more, as long as we can get maybe a nice weather in November and December, we would be working to spend all of the money that we can spend on that public works project and not turn back, or turn back as little as possible. All the other categories, we expect to fully spend.
I appreciated the actual uncommitted balance tremendously. I was duly noted it when I read my packet.
I'm sorry, so a deadline for this is to spend is when?
December thirty-first.
December thirty-first, okay.
We do, it is required, the county gave us all of our grants through June thirtieth, so we have asked them for that extension, but I don't expect it to be, I don't expect it to be a problem, they know, and we've been working with them on that. And thus far, Congress hasn't figured out how to get their act together to claw any of it back, so let's hope that continues, I guess, and we will get to use it, right? But the best, it's best to have it all encumbered. Best to do. The reservoir project did require MEPA application, so it takes longer, and we're waiting, I think, I'm sorry, we voided MEPA by the selection of the hydro, the chemical instead of the hydroraking, but we're still at the Army Corps of Engineers, so we're waiting for the Army Corps to get back to us on the reservoir dredging, and then that will be forward.
Okay. The only other one was discussion only, you don't need anything from us, great.
The only other item is just a reminder that Annual Town Election coming up on April ninth, board's question on that ballot is the removal of the fire department from civil service, and so we have information about that question up on the website, and our newsletter will have a link to that, just so people want to read up on that before the election in April, so.
And the Legal Women Voters has picked a date for a public meeting on that, which I know I have in my calendar, I might be able to find it if somebody else talks for.
Did somebody move the consent?
Yeah, we did.
We'll do it again, yeah.
Let's come back to it.
Maybe I can do my committee report while you're.
Go ahead and do that while I'm trying to find it here.
Okay, well, I just wanted to let folks know that we, Hone had another meeting on March seventh. We worked to finalize our two maps, we have a base compliance map and what we're calling the Neighborhood Housing Plan, which is above compliance. We received our fiscal analysis from our consultants, and we're waiting to check the fiscal analysis with our town departments to square up all those numbers and make sure that everyone agrees on the impacts that the potential housing units made available in our plan would have on town departments. We formalized the format for our third and final public meeting, which is going to be on March twenty-eighth at seven PM in Powers Hall. Hope everyone will come, there will also be a Zoom component, so if you can't come, you can still attend. We did commit to providing the materials for that meeting one week before the public meeting for public review. A lot of folks had asked for that in previous meetings, and we hadn't been able to accommodate that, but we're going to really try this time. And that will include the presentation that our consultant will plan to deliver, and the maps, and possible other pieces of extra information. We are, of course, still taking public comment, and we'll continue to take public comment through the public meeting. We plan to offer public comment at the public meeting, just like we did for our second public meeting with an open mic, so once the presentation will be done, the rest of the meeting will just be public comment. But if you decide you don't want to stand up and speak at that forum, or if you have something you want to get off your chest right now, or something hurts you after the meeting, of course, you can still email hone@planning.nedhamma.gov. And we look forward to seeing you there, March twenty-eighth, seven PM, Powers Hall.
In my Zoom.
Thank you, Heidi. Thank you to the whole Home Committee for all the work that they're doing and preparing for that final session as well. Other updates? I will just say that the date for the fire contract discussion for the Legal Women Voters forum is April, March nineteenth at four PM, it will be available on Zoom, and I'm sure that will be coming out from them as well.
Kathy? So, Madam Chair, I'd like to update the Select Board on TCHOC, the Town Finance Community Housing Oversight Committee. And you got in your packet the letter that the committee wrote, and I just want to maybe highlight a few things from the letter. But just to remind people, the purpose of TCHOC is really in situations as now, for example, when the Needham Housing Authority is looking to renovate and expand and lend in chambers, and town meeting has voted one point three million to them, the CPC is looking at recommending a further five point five million to them, which would then attract a total of eighty, I believe we're at eighty-four million of mostly state and federal money. But somebody needs to oversee the town portion, and that's what TCHOC does. The town will not be controlling that project, it'd be controlled by the Needham Housing Authority, but since there is town money involved, we need a way to oversee it and make sure that it is being spent properly and that the project is on track. So that's the purpose of TCHOC, just as a reminder, but I want to, if you had a chance to look at this, it's on in the packet, it starts on page two fifty-seven. On two fifty-nine, there are some recommendations that we made that I can, you know, just briefly run us through. That first, you know, we see a clear need to redevelop the units at Linden Chambers for the quality of the housing for the residents, as well as creating new housing. And we have been meeting with the Needham Housing Authority, they have been making progress, they have been, we've been going through disbursements from them on their pre-development work. They have been, and I think this is important to note, we've just been talking about ARPA funding. They are prioritizing using some ARPA funding that Representative Garlick has gotten for them first, because that's going to be expiring before they go into the one point three million of CPC funding that they have gotten from the town. It is important to note that town support is critical for attracting that state money. Getting the state and federal money is understandably a very competitive process, and one of the things that the state is looking for is commitment by the town. The town shows its commitment by spending money. So that's important, and it's a huge amount of leverage of, you know, five point five million gets you, you know, seventy-plus million. So that's important to note. And it's also important to note, and this is on page two sixty, this has been the top, the source of some confusion of some people. But, for example, if town meeting does vote the five point five million. But for example, if Town Meeting does vote the 5.5 million, these funds will not be accessible until the financial closing of the project. I think there have been some people that have been concerned that somehow the Needham Housing Authority might spend the 5.5 million, but never get the state and federal money. It is not possible. It does not work that way. This money can only be spent after the entire project financing has been secured. And in fact, as Dave has very nicely explained many times to us, can only be spent, it's only reimbursement. So not only do they have to have the entire financing package, but they have to be in construction and submitting receipts for construction to us. So the, the risk that some people have perceived is not really there of losing that money. They've got to have a project that is going. So just something to note. And then we have some recommendations. Should, again, the, the Town Meeting vote to have this money spent, this 5.5 million, certain recommendations we would have of conditions. So one is that the Needham Housing Authority would be meeting with TCHOC every month so that when we are reviewing their reimbursement requests, we can ask them questions. They will give us the progress update that we need. That they will provide a copy of their developer agreement. They are working with Cambridge Housing Authority as the developer here. And that if there are any delays, that they will notice us, notify us of anticipated project cost escalations. That they will notify TCHOC when they're at 80% of budget. And that, again, the funding is going to be committed as of the date of the closing of the financing of the project, just to make that crystal clear. So that's where we are, but, but they are making progress. And, you know, we will, we will continue to work with them.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Kathy?
Sounds great. Thanks for doing that. This is tough enough to crack.
But it's an important project and the town is invested in seeing that this housing gets renewed. It's critical that it happens. Okay. Any other reports?
Yes. CAPC was postponed. SEAL and Branding Committee was postponed. But office hours will be on the 14th at 4:30 with me here. Bring your questions.
Great. Any other reports?
Not a report. I had office hours and they, they went pretty well. Had some good people that came and one was filled with gratitude, which was really nice for someone to just say what I meant to the town and, you know, I don't know if we mean on April 2nd or not. Are we?
Probably.
Probably. All right. So next meeting is not my last meeting. Okay. It went really well.
I was going to say, not quite yet.
Thank you.
Great. All right. If there are no other topics, it's Kevin's least favorite time of the, every two weeks.
Get him out of here.
I am all ears at this point.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move adjourned.
A second that. Heidi.
Thank you for that motion. Does anybody have any comments about that motion?
It's appreciated.
Kevin, I'll call on you first.
Okay, aye.
Aye, there we go. Kathy?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Marcus?
Hi.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned.